Okay, being approximately 7:30, I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to Water for Thursday, September 26, 2019. And it is 7:30. First on the agenda is to continue the meeting with Zenith Consulting Engineers regarding the site plan for Five Harding Street. Yes, sir.
Good evening. For the record, Jamie Bissonette, Zenith Consulting Engineers. I was in front of you two weeks ago. We've revised the plans a little bit, updated based on some comments. I've also spoken with Nick Laney from HML Associates. What I'd like tonight, if it's the board's okay, I'd like to walk out of here tonight with a direction to make sure that we filed with conservation and we've spoken with the peer review for the drainage. And I'm going to sit down with the fire chief and make sure that he's comfortable with fire protection on site. I'd like to get the blessing on the site plan. And I'm happy to go over any particulars on the site plan that anybody has questions on. I know I kind of went over it last time, so if there's specifics or I can give you the whole spiel all over again, but I know you guys are busy. So whatever direction the chair or anybody else wants, I'll do.
Well, I wasn't here last time, but I did see all the plans.
Yep.
And Kathy showed them to me a couple days ago. And I think I understand. The notes that you just added to it about Nick having a look at this and the fire chief having a look at it satisfies the second through 14th questions that I had.
Yeah.
And I mean, that simply satisfies everything. It's a, I understand that by the next time we see it, we'll have, you know, scale elevations
That's correct.
Of the buildings. Just so we make sure that it's a two, you know, how many stories there are.
Yep.
You know, for the record.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't have anything else. I'm happy.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
I think it's a good use of the space.
Yeah, I do too. I really think this is a good fit for that site.
It's a great idea.
Okay.
Just a great idea.
All right. We also have a Form A as we had talked about, the bylaws over there. If it does get approved, which I expect it would, if it does, I'd love to be able to pick that up from Kathy tomorrow. But I know that'll be discussed later on tonight. So.
Right, that's the Form A for which?
This project right here, Harding Street and Cross Street. It's creating what we're going to have as our commercial site. And then the back piece is going to be for the residential.
The residential.
Single-family house. Yeah, there's going to be three single-family houses, large lots, you know. Give some nice buffer to the residential neighbors, but also maximize the commercial development in the usable area. So, all right, great.
No, I understand what you're doing there, too. And if, when it gets to it, you're going to need access from Cross Street to lot number two.
That's right.
But you'll be identifying that.
That's right.
We're already thinking it.
Yep.
We have to do this a step ahead at the same.
That's right.
Thinking about a step ahead. The other thing, and it should, this lot is big enough that you can leave a dedicated path there. I mean, it wouldn't have to be an easement. This, you should probably give them the land, don't you think?
The land, the land to who?
To the, you know, the driveway that's going to, that you're going to need from Cross to Lot Two.
Yes, yeah.
You're going to need them some more.
They are, they're absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, and that'll be part of a Form C.
Yeah, you should have them. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that'll be part of a Form C that'll be coming forward pretty soon.
Yep.
So the board's comfortable with me moving forward with Nick and conservation and the fire chief and I make the three of those parties happy and?
Yes.
All right, excellent.
They'll take care of it.
I appreciate your time tonight, guys.
Thank you very much, Jamie.
And I can pick up the Form A tomorrow, Kathy?
Good.
I move, we certify the Form A.
Jamie, do you want to speak to the committee? I know you submitted a minor. And they still have the.
Do you want to second it? I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to sign it tonight.
Oh, okay, thank you. Also Kathy and I were discussing the fee for the site plan. And the regulations there, to me, they're still not, I want to make sure that I'm doing what the board's asking. So we didn't know if it was considered a minor or a major project because the definitions of the two, you know, they reference traffic, they reference some other things. This is a big site, big building.
If this isn't a major, then nothing's a major.
Okay, just making sure, yep. So we'll bring in the adjusted fee. So, yeah, that's not a problem, I just wanted to.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
Nope, nope, thank you. I was looking for clarification.
What's going on with the site?
On which site? On this one? We're going to be putting in a commercial building off of Route 44.
We have on Harding, but what is it? What's the building, just like a?
It's going to be like a professional building where like electricians, plumbers can have their offices.
There's a lot of wet hands over there, right?
Oh, yeah, yep.
Yes, it's got, they call it an incubator building. You can have one unit, sometimes people will take two or three units, put them together, and they kind of build their company that way.
All right, sounds good, thanks, guys. I'll see you, I'll call Kathy when we get through conservation.
Yes.
All right, thanks.
Excellent.
Appreciate it.
And thanks for checking in with the fire chief.
No, absolutely.
Okay, number, that was number one and two. Number three on the agenda is to meet with Mr. Logan regarding.
No, the number two is an A and R. Are you going to take action on that?
Five Harding, we just did.
With the A and R?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes, we just voted.
I think we were speaking.
Yes, you were.
I moved, he seconded.
Oh, okay.
And we voted, no unanimous.
Okay.
Your usual sleight of hand.
Mr. Luke, I reached out again two weeks ago as Jamie Bissonette, Zenith Consulting Engineers. Was in front of you two weeks ago. We spoke about surety for Shamrock Lane. At that time, I was directed to reach out to Nick Laney at HML Associates.
Yes, right.
I did so, spoke with him this week, and he is going to be reaching out to you, Brian, for just clarification on tasks.
Okay.
And then he'd be happy to proceed, he said, so.
Okay, so that is just for the record.
That's for the record, so.
We've already discussed that, but now it's in the record.
That's right. And so I think we're at his mercy at this point.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, he'll be fine.
So we'll be back as soon as we hear something. I'll call Kathy to get on the agenda.
Okay.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thanks, Jamie. Number four is to meet with Mr. Grady from JAF Engineering for info and discussion regarding 82 Lakeside, and that was withdrawn. Number five is to meet with Mr. David Madigan from Madigan Lansvane regarding an A and R submitted for Three and Five Cranberry Lane.
Good evening. For the record, my name's Dave Madigan.
Yes, sir.
From Madigan Lansvane. So what this is, is a Form A plan, two lots on Cranberry Lane. These are existing lots, there's houses on it, people have lived there for 20 years. It's actually, the father lives in house number three, and the daughter and son-in-law live in house number five. And all they're doing, currently the property line runs right up between lots, and what they'd like to do between the two parties is just swap this blue piece, which is now part of house number three, will go to house five, and then the yellow piece will go to house three. It's an evenly swapped, both 4,729 square feet, not changing the frontages at all, not changing the front setbacks, we're still able to get the front yard circles in just like they were able to years ago. So it's really just changing the interior lot line so that really the purpose is for house number three here to get a swing set a little bit more onto his property and to just give himself a buffer around the tax court. Since it's family, it wasn't a problem, and it actually helps lot number five a little bit with a little bit bigger side yard, front yard. So that's pretty much it.
For what it was worth, I looked at it, it's a nice neighborhood.
Yes.
It's fine.
Yep.
Yeah, just fine. Move, we endorse the A and R?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, number six is to meet with Mr. Paul Turner in Outback Engineering regarding tree, street tree changes at Ledgewood Estates.
How you doing? Jason Yunkwitz from Outback Engineering, here with Mr. Turner. This is Ledgewood Drive, designed a few years back, it's well constructed, all the houses are in, and he's looking to try and wrap things up out there. One of the items he still needs to finish up with is the street trees. And for the design plan, it didn't show a location, it just said to go with the regulations. You go to the regulations and it says, "Street trees every 40 feet unless you have existing vegetation there," and then it's kind of at the purview of the planning board. So we kind of wanted to come up with a plan, so we get these trees in, he wants to get the sidewalks in and wrap this up and get it completed. So we went out and did some survey, kind of located the trees, there's existing trees. So this is Pierce Ave, this is the new Ledgewood Drive coming in, you get two houses on this side, this is the house Mr. Turner's living in, a big house here and here. And as you can see, there's lots of existing vegetation, Mr. Turner's yard's full of nice trees growing in, beautiful lawn, existing vegetation coming up here, some existing vegetation coming up here by the basin. So it really didn't make sense to try and put trees where there's already lots of vegetation going up. And there's some areas where it does need some, especially in the front, those yards are big and open, so we were going to get some trees in there. And then at the end of the cul-de-sac, it kind of opens up again where you had to do a little more clearing than what was needed. So we were proposing some trees along the front and then along up in the back. And the second thing we want to discuss with the board was, during the design plan, there was some concern that runoff on Pierce Ave, you have a shoulder that Ledgewood Drive would block any runoff that's in that shoulder. Well, during the construction process, there's nothing getting blocked there. There's a big chunk of ledge right here that prevents us from putting a pipe or anything in there. There's no runoff. For all the years this road's been in here, it's been for quite a few years now, nothing's getting trapped along Pierce Ave, and it really doesn't make any sense to go in there and dig up and try and get to this ledge and try and get something in there when you're probably going to make more of a mess than just to leave it be. There's no water getting trapped along that side of Pierce Ave because of the road we constructed. So we'd like to just not do that part of it and get the trees planted. So I don't know if you guys have had a chance to get out there and take a look, it looks beautiful out there, the houses, lawns. He did, Mr. Turner did a great job building the subdivision. The houses look great out there. I'm very happy with it, I'm sure Mr. Turner is, and I hope the board is as well.
Have you gone out there to check it out, think, at all?
Pardon? I've seen it over the, you know, it's beautiful.
I drive by it every day. Street came out very nice. I have no issues not tearing into that and putting a pipe in, because like you said, time has proven, water's just not getting there.
Yeah, sometime. And there's been some good rainfall. The roads have been paved for four, five years?
Three years.
Three years?
It was a heck of a rainstorm.
There has been.
Couple days ago.
Yeah, and there's just, during the design phase, it appeared that water might get trapped there because of that road, and it really doesn't happen. Pierce Ave is super elevated enough that water just does not get trapped on its shoulder. And there's that big piece of ledge right at the end of the.
Well, all those rocks around there caused the houses to be, you know, a little different, a different height sign, which is attractive.
I think.
If it were just a sand hill, they all wind up looking like.
Yeah.
And so it's a nicer looking thing when there's.
I appreciate it, thank you very much. I think it's perfect for the reduction in the number of trees, it's perfect.
Okay. Yeah, we'll proceed with that, and he can start trying to wrap this all up and getting everything sorted out.
How's the plowing go out there?
I take care of it.
Are you always going to?
No.
The town's going to take it.
Definitely.
Have you talked to the building, I mean, the highway surveyor at all about it?
No, I haven't.
You haven't planted those trees in this cul-de-sac, have you?
Not yet.
Not yet. Why don't you talk to him first? See what his thoughts are on it.
Okay.
Because I know you plow with a pickup truck, I assume. He might not be plowing it with a pickup truck when it's time for him to plow it. So he may, he may, A, want you to keep the trees back off the road a little bit.
Yeah, not a problem, I planned on that anyways.
Awesome. If you talk to him, please, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
That way it just creates a good feeling with him, you know?
Yeah, I agree.
And also includes him. Thanks, Paul.
We'll talk to him and make sure he's okay with what we're doing, if he wants anything changed, and then we'll just proceed with that and get this all wrapped up.
Yep, you guys okay with the trees?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Can we have a motion?
A motion to accept the tree planting plan and changes to the culvert pipe that was discussed.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sounds good. Thanks, guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, now it's the review of the following zoning board appeals petitions for Thomas
The Thomas one makes perfect sense, but just a routine thing for the ZBA.
Yep.
No, we shouldn't.
We don't have an opinion, no.
No.
It's routine and everything makes sense.
Is that a motion to?
Yeah.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I mean, the ZBA will determine if there needs to be parking and how tight of a driveway that is, you know, because they're going to turn this into a commercial property. The ZBA will handle that.
I think, doesn't she say that it is?
No, it's residential, but it's in the business zone.
Well, it's a zone commercial property, so, but it's also, it also could be deemed a home business.
Yeah.
Because it's just a real estate office. So it's pretty much by right.
Mm-hmm.
If it wasn't for the size, I mean, they might make a couple of comments, but I don't think they're going to be able to stop it.
That's fine.
You know?
I thought it was a business.
What?
That particular house.
Oh, really?
Yeah, but, but no, if they say it's a house, it's a house.
I don't even know, I mean, I know it's on Main Street, but I'm not sure which house it is because there's no locus.
In between Bridge Street and the, the, and the first one of the Canadian buildings. There's a dog.
Yeah, yeah.
I think there's two dog places.
Yep.
Surrounding it. Like Janet Black used to own.
Oh, that one, I know where that is. Okay, yep. The architect down building, or.
Okay. What? I don't know what, I don't know what to say, but I, yeah, I do. The only thing we can possibly say is we have no comment. I mean, that's.
Yeah, I agree.
This is for the ZBA.
Yep.
They, they can vote that out. You know, any comment is just.
Motion to no comment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's a tough one.
Yeah.
Very tight.
Yep.
Yeah, and there's people right beside him, and they're probably going to have to, you know, see a lodge.
Yep, and that's a different board and a different meeting.
Yep, so, agenda number eight.
Okay.
Mr. Yunkwitz?
Okay, I'm sorry, folks, if you came for the Airbnb one. Because what I wanted to do is, we, I guess a few months ago, the Airbnb rule went into effect in July for Massachusetts. And so there were a couple of options that someone in town hall noticed. One of the options was to increase the Lakeville's tax on the room rate. Lakeville in 1995 voted to have a 4% room rate tax. And it went through town meeting. It's a, you know, this is a town, I have to make sure you understand, this is a town meeting thing. We can't change a tax rate by ourselves, nor can the selectmen or anything like that. This is something where we have to prepare the paperwork to take it to town meeting and to propose and have town meeting voted up or down. Now, we don't have any hotels, we don't have any motels, and we don't collect this tax. So I was just going to propose to this board, so we just took it off our plate of things to do, that we weren't going to draft the proposal to change the rate from 4% to 6% or do any other action to it. And we would wait until some, some large group approached us to do that work. It didn't make any sense to do that work. And so unless somebody, let me just drop that for a second, and let me do the second one. Pardon?
Wait, can you find the statement where it talks about the 4% for an Airbnb waiver from a town law? Because there's nothing in any of the bylaws currently that I'm aware of regarding anything with the.
No, it wouldn't be, no.
Right, so where would we find that? Because you had said we had already voted on it a long, long time ago at 4%.
This one, I think you'd find this, oh damn, I found it independently once.
So right now it's void, though, if it's not in our bylaws? Because it would be.
No, 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 no.
We had a necessity.
No, it can be anywhere. It can be anywhere, and you'd probably find it with the Department of Revenue, and please don't quote me.
You said it was 1995 or something?
It was 1995, and they, and they keep records. The state has a record of the, of the 300 odd towns in Massachusetts of what each one charges and whether they charge anything at all. And on that list, which I think is a Department of Revenue list, but it might be a, there's another, the hotel people have some separate lists of their own. And we're in there at 4%, and the note is that it was done in 1995. And sure enough, in 1995, we had a vote like that because I think, and I'm just guessing, I didn't live here, but the, that somebody was proposing a hotel or something like that. But the, the state accepts that as true, and I accept the state's.
And so we could very well then go to town meeting, put it on the agenda for town meeting, and have that wiped out if we wanted to.
You could, but you'd have to have someone draft it.
Okay.
It's, you can't do it just by standing up or writing out a quick thing. And that's what, see, we do that for people sometimes.
We have the town.
But for, considering we've never gained, we've never seen a penny of this, and we have no idea of how many Airbnb people there are in Lakeville, or how quickly the money would be coming, if it's coming at all, the state sometimes changes its mind in the middle of it. We only find out at the end of the year, when the pink sheets come out, the money comes out in one check to the town. And it would be the first one the town ever saw, and the town would have to figure out what it was.
I'm curious, what changed with the state that brought this up now last year and then this year, or not that long ago? And then again, what was the state, the change in the state that made it?
The Airbnb law got passed, which is a, which was a significant thing. That was, Mike Rodrigue did most of the work on it. He was the, he was in charge of it in the Senate, and it took them, I would say, two solid years of trying to push it through the legislature, and then.
But what did they push through? I guess that's my question. What is it they pushed through that made it come down for our town?
There didn't used to be any state tax on Airbnb.
Chapter.
Now there is, I think it's 5%. Airbnb automatically collects it and then remits it to the state, and then each house has to file with the state at the end of the year.
It's a real big, if you're doing it, if you're involved in that, it's a big deal, and it's a big business. If you're not involved in it, it's a really small deal. I mean, it just doesn't seem to affect. And on that list, which I think is a Department of Revenue list, but it might be a ho- there's a, there's another, the hotel people have some separate lists of their own. And we're, we're in there at four percent, and the note is that it was done in nineteen ninety-five. And sure enough, in nineteen ninety-five, we had a vote like that, because I think, and I'm just guessing, I didn't live here, uh, but the, uh, that somebody was proposing, uh, a hotel or something like that. But, um, the, the state accepts that as true, and I accept the state's.
And so, we could very well then go to town meeting, put it on the agenda for town meeting, and have that wiped out if we wanted to?
You could, but you'd have to have someone draft it.
Okay.
Uh, it's, uh, you, you, you can't do it just by standing up or writing out a, a quick thing. And, uh, that's what, see, uh, we, we do that for people sometimes.
We have the town-
But for a four, considering we've never get, we've never seen a penny of this, and we have no idea of how many Airbnb people there are in Lakeville, uh, or how quickly the money would be coming, if it's coming at all. Uh, the state sometimes changes its mind in the middle of it. We, we only find out at the end of the year, when the pink sheets come out, the money comes out in one check to the town. And, and it would be the first one the town ever saw, and the town would have to figure out what it was.
I'm curious, what changed with the state that brought this up now, last year, and then this year, or not that long ago? And then again, what did the, what was the state, the change in the state that made it?
The Airbnb, uh, law got, got passed, which is a, which was a significant thing. That was, uh, um, Mike Rodrigue, uh, did most of the work on it. He was, he, he was the, uh, he was in charge of it in the Senate. And it, it took them, I would say, two solid years of trying to push it through the legislature, and, and then-
But what did they push through, I guess that's my question? What is it they pushed through that made it come down for our town?
There didn't used to be any state tax on Airbnb.
Chapter.
Now there is, I think it's five percent. Um, Airbnb automatically collects it, and then remits it to the state, and then each house has to file with the state at the end of the year.
Okay.
It's a real big, if you're doing it, if, if you're involved in that, it's a big deal, and it's a big business. If you're not involved in it, it's a really small deal. I, I mean, it just doesn't seem to affect, uh, anybody else except the operators, uh, themselves. We, we just, uh, we don't have to do any work, well, now, here's my next one. The next one is, Lakeville can impose an up to three percent community impact fee on some short terms. The town would have to collect this directly, and this isn't very, written very clearly. If this is, I mean, it, it's sloppy drafting in here. And what that means is, or what it means to me is, that, uh, we, uh, because we think this is making more work for our town, and somebody's, uh, you know, we, there are police problems, and this problems, and, you know, whatever sort of problems you can imagine, we could get three percent of the gross. But we'd have to justify it, like, like any other impact fee. We would have to justify every dollar. I mean, you'd have to say, well, we used one police, one half of a policeman for three months, you know, and, and stuff like that.
So, basically, you can take some money back from the state from this five percent?
No, this is an addition, no, this is an addition to it. Plus, you have to collect it yourself. So you'd have to find out later which people use the Airbnb and chase them down for three percent. And I'm gonna propose that we don't do that, uh, that that is just simply, uh, you know, that's simply waste money. For, uh, I mean, it would have to cost more than what, than you would possibly get out of it, and that we'll drop that. The same as, uh, we'll just, uh, I would propose that we remain neutral on the four percent. You know, leave the four percent the way it is, don't increase it, don't decrease it, and, uh, just wait for someone to tell us to, uh, do something about it. And I'll write up a, I'll write up a note that we can send to the selectmen saying, you know, so that this way, we're officially out of it. And that's all it was, it wasn't, it wasn't gonna be any decisions or anything like that, but it couldn't- in, in the minutes, you can't, uh, and everything we do here, we have to put in the minutes. But it doesn't always exactly, it doesn't, you're not allowed to use bold print, and italics and stuff like that, that's not fair.
Well, what's good to know about is, the state put it at five, now it can go to town meeting to get the four dropped off.
You could, yes, yeah, there's, uh, and that's about, yeah, and you would, uh, you would probably wind up dropping it for all the other, but no one else is doing it, so that wouldn't really, that's not a good point.
Well, you said your home-
We don't have any other motel.
Right, and if we did, though, they should say that this year they're a business, and that's what they do. Our home instead is doing it for other reasons.
The, the way this, if, if you read this, this, uh, the, the thing they signed, uh, they make you seem like a business.
I'm gonna, to, to get more information, thank you.
It, it very much make, when you read it, you very much think you're a business, and they certainly think you're a business, so.
Thank you, thank you.
The state does.
Yes. So, uh, that's my motion. To officially ignore, and I'll write up a, a thing for the-
Should we wait till you write it up and then do this one more time?
We can do that.
Let's do that.
Yeah.
And then, that way, at least Barbara and Mark can, uh,
Yep.
if they have one last thing to say, that-
Excellent point.
And then, maybe instead of putting it up-
There won't be anything hidden in it, you know, I mean, it's not, we're not-
Maybe instead of putting update on the, on the minutes, maybe we can put, um, what it is. The, uh, proposal to, um, to eliminate or to, um, table, um, the town's, um, need for Airbnb. Where the town-
Uh, we'll, we'll think of something.
Yeah, something like that, you know what I mean?
I'll think of something neutral that doesn't-
Let's put that on the minute, so it's clear when it's coming at us, what it is.
Yep.
And that way, we don't have people-
Yep.
Oh, yeah. Next on the, uh, agenda is to, um, approve the minutes for June twenty-seventh.
I read these, Brian, uh, motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I read them too.
Spudwin?
Do we have, are we gonna have town meeting in the fall?
Oh, I shouldn't know.
That's further down.
What?
There, there's a memo you can read after about that.
Oh. Oh.
It's on the new business.
Oh. Okay.
Wow, you sent the memo to the, uh, selectman?
Well, um, asking for your approval to send that.
You, oh, you are asking that?
Is that about the new zoning or changing zoning that you're talking about? Or we didn't need to that?
Yes, that's regarding the zoning memo.
So what is it that we're zoning, are you asking the selectman for?
It's, um, they want us to have a meeting for, um, zoning bylaw changes. And we're sending them a memo, asking them if this, they're going to have a town meeting, because we would have to hold a hearing, advertise-
I know all of that, but I'm saying, what is it that they wanna change? It's like, why, why, why are we having to do any of that?
Uh, temporary licenses. I think it's coming from possibly ZBRAC, which is the zoning, um-
Yeah, we haven't met in several months, uh, but those are from, those are from, say, like, uh, May and June, uh, the ones we decided upon, and then we pretty much went, um, at a, at a stop for as, as far as changes for this, uh, fall's meeting.
Yeah, it's like temporary license to place a mobile home, or, um, um, upon application of the owner of imposible land, the building commissioner may issue a temporary license to place an unoccupied mobile home as defined herein for whatever-
It was a-
I remember that one, that had a, uh, that had a typo in it that got passed, and now we have to do it again without the typo. Uh, so that's one that already went-
This was already on, yeah, some of this is already on the last, uh-
That, that, that only went, already went through once, uh, but a, but a page was missing or something, and, and we're absolut-
Brian, can I speak to it?
They make us do things absolutely.
It was already passed at town meeting, and the authority was changed from the selectmen to the building commissioner, and in one portion of it, they forgot to put the commissioner, it still says the board. So they're just making that change, correction.
I do remember that in, in what was written up. But, so, you know, we're looking at other towns' meeting minutes, and they're very in-depth, and they're like four pages long, and ours aren't. So like, somebody who couldn't make it to this meeting tonight would have no idea what all of that was that was discussed, but they do need to know, so can we read more?
Well, this is just an agenda, this is just a summary.
No, not the agenda, but for the minutes that are gonna-
The minutes are pretty-
So, yeah, like, you guys were talking about the zoning thing, like, as if people weren't here listening, but I'm here listening to understand the good information. So even to have that on the minutes, to say, this is what we talked about, and tell us.
The minutes do say that.
Yeah, they're just really bad, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The minutes do say that, you just said that.
Say, she said what?
The minutes do say that.
When these minutes are posted, they will say that.
Yeah, I, I've read through a lot of minutes, and we're missing a lot of information. It's very vague, it just needs to be more of what's discussed.
No.
Yeah, I'm, I'm telling you from a, from a resident's standpoint-
They're not vague, I, I was, I, I've been listening in to, you know, some of the comments about what we're doing and things like that. And you just simply have no idea what we're doing.
I, I put the main information there.
Yeah.
I would ask you to, to, um, I would ask you to bring some of those to me and show me kind of what you feel is missing, and I could-
Sure, I can even just email them, I'll copy and paste an email over. I don't, I'm not even sure who you are, I'm sorry.
I'm, uh, I'm Kathy Murray, you can, uh,
Okay.
access me on either the planning board or zoning board page.
And it's not just your minutes, it's like, all combined.
Hers are the best of any of them, and so we will defend them a lot.
I think they're better than all of them.
I mean, she does very well.
There's information that would be nice to have.
Yeah.
All right, Zink? Those moving ass, huh? What's that?
Next one here, forty R.
Um, were you in favor of sending, signing and sending that letter?
Yeah. Yes. Yes, I know, I know what you're talking about. Zink, were you in favor of signing and sending that letter to Maureen?
Yes.
So what's the letter, that's what I mean? What letter are you guys signing?
Okay, I'll read it, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. On August fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, the planning board received the attached memo from the town administrator. The board has been unable to take action on this request. This change was a clerical correction in part of a bylaw amendment that was approved at the spring town meeting, but not yet approved by the attorney general. On September seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, the town clerk received approval from the attorney general, allowing this proposed change to move forward. As a fall town meeting date has not been scheduled, has not yet been scheduled, the planning board seeks direction from the board of selectmen. The planning, uh, the select, the planning board would not want to incur the cost of legal advertising for a public hearing if the town meeting will not be held within six months. Do you know why we don't wanna do that?
Yeah, it's a waste of money.
No, because we'd have to have another hearing if we don't have a town meeting within six months. Okay?
Perfect.
Okay. If there is not a town meeting vote on the proposal within six months, no action can be taken without a subsequent notice and, a, a subsequent notice, hearing, and planning board report. The board looks forward to your response. Okay?
Then I have one more question, so, um, when all of that went over with the zoning board changes, what, what got sent to the attorney general? I know that everybody, um, you know, gave their vote at town meeting, but we, there's no, like, copy of that anywhere online. Can somebody put a copy of that online, so we can see what went over to the attorney general?
You know, you, you got that on your way into town, into town meeting. What we do is, what they do is they split up, um, uh, they, they have ahead of time, uh, all the warrant items-
Yeah, no, I know, I know all of them, I don't have a-
No, you know, you don't know.
I don't have a copy.
Did you go to town meeting?
I did go to town meeting, and I wanted to make sure something got stricken, and I didn't see that, so I'm asking for the copy that went over to the attorney general.
That's, that's the copy that you got.
Nate Darling put in there that I was, wanted to make sure got, got moved out, and I didn't see that, so I just wanna verify. So where would I get a copy of that right now?
Town clerk.
Oh, yeah, that's, that, that's what we have to do. That's, those are the rules, we have to refer it to our keeper of records, which is the town clerk. But, you actually have it, it, it's the same as the-
Town meeting package.
As, as a town meeting thing, it just gets cut up in pieces, and then we read it, they vote it, and then we carry it up to the clerk and give it back to her. She puts it back together and sends the entire thing to the attorney general's office, of, of the ones that got passed.
Yeah, but it-
The ones that didn't get passed. Now, there was one that was taken out because, uh, uh, it wasn't ready yet, it was, uh, I think it was a, uh, a road that was gonna be accepted for Rome Barber. And so that one is pulled out of the stack. The whole, the entire rest of the stack, which you saw, every word, uh, went, went to the attorney general. It shouldn't have been, unless somebody wrote one out during the meeting.
Well, so what they, what they put on there was incorrect, then at the meeting to verify what was going in there was gonna be correct. I didn't see the change that was made. So, right before we did town meeting, there was a selectman meeting, where they discussed all of those items that were going to town meeting. And so there was an item in there that was not worded appropriately, they actually removed something regarding conservation in one of the statements, and I didn't see that taken out. So I just wanted to verify that that's went over to the attorney general.
You have a good- You have a good point, if there was a change at the meeting-
Right, exactly, yeah. So I'll go to the clerk, but I will tell you, it's taken a long time for the clerk to get anything sometimes, I'm still waiting to get the other, I have information that I asked for. So I'm gonna go.
She was, the clerk has been shorthanded for months, uh, she has a full crew now, uh, for the first week.
Huh?
Said I have to speak to the next one also.
Speak.
All right, um, at our last meeting, I know Mr. Pulisic came in to make a change to the forty R.
Yes.
And because at the zoning board, when you make a change to a forty B, it's just done a little different. So I had the opportunity to speak to counsel, and she was at the last zoning board meeting, and I mentioned it to her. And I gotta have a copy of the bylaw, that was the highlighted one of how you make a change, and a copy of the decision, because I know he had mentioned that he thought that it was included in there, which at the very last page, and next to the last page. The highlighted number six, kind of, that's the only place where I can find where any changes were addressed. But she said that the board would have to, it would have to be done in a PAA meeting, so he will have to return to do it in that meeting, he can't do this in a planning board meeting. And then the board will have to determine if they feel it's a minor change or a major change.
And if it's a major change?
It's like, it's, it would have to be re-advertised, a butter's notified, et cetera. The counsel kind of felt that it was, you know, it was out of the footprint, they're redoing the drainage, she would cons, she would consider it was, in her opinion, it was a major change.
That was for the, um,
It was the same number of units. It was the same number of units, but there were-
Yeah, there, it was, and actually, I attached behind that, I pulled out just that paragraph from the minutes where it was discussed. That's just a draft, I have to say, I have not finished those.
Actually, going to duplexes, uh, Zink, sorry, going from townhouses to duplexes. He said the duplexes followed, followed the terrain better on that road.
I remember now, yeah.
So, the, the change is going to duplexes from townhouses. Oh, okay.
Which would be an upgrade, actually.
So do we have to schedule a, a meeting?
On the PAA?
Which would be before, uh, I assume, before, uh, like, uh, seven fifteen?
Um, yeah, they actually did, you did schedule it for our next, your next meeting.
But we didn't know, we, we have it scheduled, but we didn't know we were doing this. Uh, the next one, uh, October third, is that right?
Uh, October tenth, that's the next, I believe.
We needed to reschedule it, but not for this.
Do we have to reschedule which for?
Mostly because there was, there was kind of, uh, there was only three of us once again, it was you, myself, and Mark, and, uh, I think we wanted to wait and get Barbara and Zink's, um, and have everybody there if possible.
Right, for them, I assume.
In case people had thoughts that we didn't know about.
And if we switch to a quarterly meeting for the PAA, that, that we can do that officially.
So we'd be able, we'd be able to handle this on that day?
Yeah, because I would have to just let him know that he'll need to come in for that date.
Yes, Mr. Palucci, and...
Would we need a town council there?
No, no.
In the interest of saving time, or, I'm just thinking...
Yeah, I know.
You know what I mean?
I do.
Because if they're not here, then we really can't...
Well, because really, all you can do at that meeting is determine if you think it's minor or major.
Right.
And if, you know, depending on that vote, then...
If it's major, they would have to do a great deal of paperwork.
If it's major, then you have to re-advertize it, then, you know...
We're not going to have our town council do the paperwork for us.
Palucci would.
Agreed, yeah.
A new decision would have to be drafted, the whole thing. So Ben, you would want counsel, I would think, at that following meeting.
Later on?
Yep.
Okay.
So that's at 7:15, right?
Do you want to go at 7, maybe?
7, maybe, just in case it takes a little while.
Yep.
He may, I couldn't, I wouldn't venture a guess what his thoughts are, but if it's, if it puts him back to square one, he may just say, "Never mind." Do you know what I mean?
Right.
I don't know. And go back to the original point.
See, what we, what we do is paperwork. That's, we don't plan anything. That's, we just... But we're the eyes and ears of the registry of deeds.
Actually, there was one more thing.
And we have to...
There's one more?
Yes, there is.
Keep track of all these logs.
One more thing. Okay, our next meeting...
I was going to say, do you want to just make sure you said that? Because I forgot to put that on the agenda.
Yes, yes. Next meeting is Thursday, October 10 at 7 o'clock. For the PAA, and 7:30 for the planning board at the Lakeville Police Station. And then Agenda Number 13 is for, "Does the board want to schedule a brief meeting with the engineers regarding 57 Long Point Road?" I mean, we were supposed to, they had asked us if we'd go there at 10 o'clock in the morning on a Wednesday.
Kenya, I don't, I don't know what that is. 57 Long Point Road.
Oh, that's the development, 40B development down on Island Terrace.
Oh, yes.
It wasn't a 40B, but that was just a straight development.
Condos.
Yeah. Yeah, Island Terrace.
Island Terrace. I didn't know that that was the official address for 57 Long Point. Okay.
Yeah. This is a development proposed, but it's still in court.
That's good. I hope it doesn't...
Do we, do we want that?
I'd like to meet with them, yeah, but I don't want to be at 10 o'clock in the morning.
Do you want the history? They did come into town hall. There was a brief meeting. The health agent, conservation, the town administrator, as well as Nate Darling. They do kind of show what their kind of vision is, what they're doing, how they're working with DEP. It's just, like I said, a brief kind of overview of the project. And the engineers did ask if you wanted to do the same thing, kind of, maybe just at the town hall, a brief night meeting. It would be at night, at your convenience.
At the town hall?
Yeah, well, that's kind of what my thing was, because it's just going to be the engineers and the board. I mean, it's going to be an open meeting. Anyone can attend. But just kind of to throw the plan out and kind of just let you know what they're doing.
Their last plan, well, that last meeting was completely based on the fact that they have outstanding, like, legal issues, right? And this is all based on it clearing up?
As far as I know, it's been resolved.
Oh, really?
It's, I'm going to assume that's why they're moving forward.
Oh, okay.
The parties didn't have standing.
Did they have any drawings? They had no standing?
No.
City, was it New Bedford and Taunton? Both cities?
Okay, well, here we go.
How many acres was that over there?
I would say it's more than 20, right?
Surprisingly few. It's less. Surprisingly few. It's the, you know, halfway up the bank of there is, belongs to Dacus. The whole back bank belongs to Dacus. They...
They're only taking the...
The actual property that's owned by Island Terrace is smaller than what you'd think. And the access to it is going to be some, going to be some interesting, interesting arguments.
How many do you think you'll put in, just curiosity?
And they reduced the number of, from what I understand, they reduced the number again, because there are several issues that caused them to go in that direction, mostly being so close to drinking water.
Yeah.
That, and they, and deals that they already made with the DEP. And they have, the proposals all have to do with how much wastewater they can generate down to the gallon. And this is, and they divide it up by how many people they can cram into there.
There are going to be informational meetings. They definitely want the townspeople to know exactly what's happening, so.
Sure about that?
They already had a couple of meetings and stuff like that. But when it get, when it finally gets to us, by that time, we have real drawings. Big, and they're... So we're looking forward to seeing what the real ones are.
So I don't know if you want me to, if you want to schedule a meeting with them or not?
What do you think, Zink? Want to hear from us?
Sure.
Always.
Sure, absolutely.
Because those are, on that calendar, that's kind of the only dates that are available. Like, it was a Monday or Tuesday, so I don't know if that works for your schedules.
They're not around on Thursdays?
No, because it's like, you do have a meeting or it's a zoning board meeting, so... And then I don't think you want to have on Halloween.
No.
You said Monday or Tuesday?
Monday or Tuesday. If you maybe want to pick a few, or maybe two or three dates, and I can check with Mike and any Mark, Mark and whoever.
I mean, was, would the 22nd and the 29th be too far out? I don't think so, right? They're going to be a while, right?
I think so.
What do you think, Zink?
22?
22 or 29?
I won't be around the 22nd.
You won't?
We could say 28th or 29th, Monday or Tuesday of that week. That's fine by me, too.
28th, 29th.
Reach out and see if that would work.
Time's seven, maybe? 7 o'clock?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want to hit Mark and Barbara first before you ask? I think that's the best way to go. 10 o'clock on the Wednesday. Okay, this is probably a motion that's due right about now.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
On the table.
Aye.